We want to thank you for this day. Thank you for our lives. Give us the guidance that we need at this Commissioner's Court. Move this court to do everything for the benefit of the public. Help this nation, solve its problems. We ask all these things in Christ's name.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Duarte. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every hand and justice for all.
And the Texas pledge.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I made it all up. This is almost going to be like the third week in a row without love. Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate y'all covering. Every time they hear me hesitate on a pledge because I have this weird mental block, they get really quiet so everybody can hear. Moving on, recognition of visitors. This is the agenda item. If there's anybody that would just like to identify themselves for a record, I'm going to give you that opportunity to. You can state your name and say, you know, just here and just wanted to just welcome or whatever, but it's not public comment. So if you have something that you'd like to communicate to Commissioner's Court, we're going to do so in Agenda Item Number Six. This is the recognition of visitors. If there's nobody that'd like to identify themselves, there's no pressure that you do so. If you're here on an agenda item, we'll be identifying you and recognizing you when that agenda item comes up. If there's nobody here, then welcome to everybody. Thank you all for being here. And please, if you're watching online, come on in in person. Order's great. Is there anybody who'd like to identify themselves for the record? Moving on, Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioner's Court Opening Remarks. I believe Commissioner Olivera, it's your turn up to that first. Is that right?
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, everyone. Busy week, but it was a very good week. So first of all, I'd just start off with a little recognition. First, I'd like to recognize our Road and Bridge Administrator Ray Gonzalez. On Saturday, we had a heavy rain that came through our towns. In a couple of areas, we had a little bit over five inches in rain. Some areas of concern that we had was the Silver Creek Bridge and also a low-water crossing at the end of Corrigan Road where the road and the culverts got washed away. So thanks to Ray and his team, we were able to put in a temporary safe crossing for the individuals that was trapped on the other side. There was no way that they could cross over the highway. So Ray, thank you for you and your team for your diligence on getting it fixed. It was a great opportunity for me. I had an opportunity to shadow Ray the entire day, him and his team, to really see how they get work done, the coordination. A lot of movement parts, so it went real well for me. Also, I'd like to recognize Ty Token, Ty Housen. And there was another individual with him. I failed to get his name and apologize for that. Anyhow, they're with the Skidmore Fire Department. And before the sun came up, they were outside removing trees from our county roads to provide a safe pathway, securing electrical lines that had fallen down. So it was real good. So I was happy to see that everybody came together in a quick. And last, Judge, I want to recognize your efforts here for signing our grant application on such a short notice so we could continue moving forward. So thank you very much. I know you had a busy week and thanks for taking time for doing that. Some general information, last week I had an opportunity to meet with our DPS group and visit their office to understand how to, in a good way, obtain accident information on our highways. Specifically at 359 and 181, there are a lot of accidents that are occurring there. They notified me that they don't retain the accident reports. The Tech dot does. So it was a learning curve for me. So I went to Tech dot, met with them and in the process of following an open record request to get that information. While I was there, I did have a high-level meeting with Tech dot concerning issues that we're having in Skidmore, Tynan area, everything from lights, turning lanes, road repairs, and also, bottom line is, accidents. You know, what we do to prevent some of these accidents that are occurring because when we have them, they're bad. They're fatalities or someone's getting hurt. So a lot of it is probably related to human error, but can't rule everything else out. Anything we can do to help prevent that would be great. Tomorrow, I'll be attending a city hall meeting. There's going to be some issues around city ordinances, so it's going to be a way to enhance my knowledge in how the city ordinances work. So I'm going to participate in that, just so I can get an understanding, you know, what's there and what's not there. Also, I want to remind everyone that the notice for appraisal values have been sent out. Attached is a copy of the property owner's notice to protest. So that's a good one to take a look at if you hadn't looked at that yet. Tonight, I will be attending a ribbon cutting celebration at the new fire department building that was built in Tynan, so I'll be attending that. Also received another thank you from Tynan Water for the funding and the purchase of the Cyclone. So those guys are really, really appreciative. And Skidmore had an opportunity to meet with Steve Bachelor and Mr. Waterhouse with the Skidmore I D. And presented the certificates that are normally done every year from the Commissioner's Court. So they're very thankful for that. Also, there was a great segue into what I was mentioning earlier, working with the school again. We're in the process of setting a date for our second, my second town hall meeting. And the process is going to be on how to protest Texas. So that's going to be coming up. I'll give notice of date when that's going to happen. A lot of thanks, you know, to the Crime Stoppers. We had an action item here with Mr. Showalter and his team. Anyhow, the tourniquets are in and they are planning to deliver those to the school very soon. So great work by our Crime Stoppers. And again, I didn't realize how big of an organization that was and what they do for the community. Also addressed one of the issues that's been going on, Commissioner, for about 35 years, maybe longer, is dogs. So we had a resident that had a complaint. And I contacted some of our community fairs, see if there's anything that could be done about it. Basically, because we're unincorporated, there's nothing to be done about it. Anyhow, she inquired if I could go talk to the neighbor, which I did. The neighbor was very cooperative. And she's going to do everything she can to mitigate her dogs trespassing over those properties. So that's how it works. The Papalote, again, thanks to Ray, I was able to witness the flooding of Silver Creek. That water does come up and those people are trapped. I did contact Linda Clevenger, who's our first, or, no, she's not first responders. These are EMT, at the next level above first responders. Anyhow, to make sure everybody on that side of the creek was doing good and everything was okay. So they're used to it and hopefully we have plans in place to mitigate that problem occurring again. So that's a brief summary.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, please.
It was a busy week last week trying to get the final tallies on the G L O. We had to get an additional 50 surveys or 50 household surveys. And the grant writers did complete their work and send it into Jennifer. Jennifer passed it over to the judge's office and got that all done. Thank you, Judge.
Mostly Jennifer.
Mostly Jennifer, yes. Jennifer did it.
Thank you all. She might get bored.
She did a real good job. But no, that's the update on the four projects. That was the Pettis Mud, Tynan, water and sewer areas, and then Silver Creek and 631. So that one will be turned in if it's not turned in today already. So that was, today's the date to submit. I attended the economic summit. I did the opening remarks for that at the Coastal Bend College. That was very, very informative, very enlightening. We had people from, Agrolife was there, so was the workforce, Lyft, Main Street, the city of Beeville and BDA, Randy Sykes. All those were there to help people that wanted to start a business or have a business going already, how to get some help and enhance their businesses. So that was very good. I hope they have some more of those there. Had a couple of brush calls and turned them over to Road and Bridge. They took care of that. One was, which should be Witz, but he took care of that for them. And then Greco removed all their equipment from the top of the roof of the jail. So all those tubes and everything that was up there, they're gone. Hopefully we won't get another bill for one. This was the last one that we got, right?
I don't think we have a final yet, but if they removed it, we should be getting one.
Okay. And they still have the final balancing on the air. And we've got to go back and check the controls. They have to show the sheriff's office and the maintenance how to do the controlling of that because apparently Texas Air doesn't have a controller anymore. They've lost that contractor. So they're going back and forth with that to teach our guys how to run the air conditions up there. I had a meeting with South Texas Judges and Commissioners, the last meeting before our conference next month. And that's all wrapping up, getting close. At the BDA, we had that wind that we had, not this Saturday, Saturday before, the real strong storm that came in at 5:00 a.m. It did some little bit of damage to the brand-new building that they had out there going up. So it's all covered. They're going to have to replace about another 15 or 20 sheets of that brand-new metal that they put up because it ripped it, it just ripped it off the walls with the screws and all. And we passed by the courthouse last night. I'm going to, John, your staff, the courthouse yard and main outside looks outstanding. I mean, there's no cars, but I mean, the whole grounds look really, really attractive. Thank you. You know, so tell your staff, pass that on. That's all for me, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Duarte.
Thank you, Judge. I want to follow up a couple of things, Commissioner Olivera. Commissioner, I also will be attending the Tynan ribbon cutting. I've got a personal phone call, so I'll be down there with you, sir. Ray. And on those graduation certificates, for those of you that aren't aware, this started several years ago. Commissioner Hager was the vanguard on this. And every graduating senior and even the ones in Pawnee that go through the seventh grade receive a personalized graduation certificate signed by all commissioners, original signatures, and the commissioners pay for this certificate. It is not, the county doesn't pay for it. We actually pay for it. And you delivered to Tynan, Skidmore, Tynan, I took them to Pawnee, Pettis, and Beeville. And I'm not sure who selected the paper, the cardstock this year, but it is outstanding. Was that Ms. Dolores? You get bonus points this year.
Wow, Dolores.
When I took these certificates to the schools, the people said, "Golly, those look great." And they started fingering them. And they said, "These really look good." And what we had done in the past, it was more or less heavy bond paper. This was cardstock.
Yes, sir.
And it was, it's outstanding. The printing was good. It's really good. And I, those of us that knew some of the kiddos that were graduating, we always put a personal note on there when we sign it. And sometimes we'll have the kids go, "Man, I didn't know y'all did this." Because when they get their diploma, they also give them this certificate. And it's really outstanding. It really is. And Judge, with your permission, I'd like to read a resolution into the record, sir.
Please proceed.
The House of Representatives is recognizing an activity that's going to happen in Pettis. And this was read on the House floor. It's House Resolution Number 2011. Whereas the first annual Star Stripes and Sizzle Barbecue Cookoff is taking place in Pettis on June 10th and July 1st, 2023. And whereas sanctioned by the Champion Barbecue Alliance is one of the organization's state championship cookoffs. This much anticipated event attracts talented chefs from across Texas and beyond. These highly skilled pit masters put their culinary abilities to the test as they vie to produce the tastiest entries in several different categories. And whereas the event's grand champion will receive an invitation to the American Royal World Series of Barbecue Contest as well as an opportunity to compete at the Jack Daniels World Championship Invitation of Barbecue Competition. And whereas the Star Stripes and Sizzle Barbecue Cookoff raises funds for the Pettis to lead a volunteer fire department, a nonprofit organization serving area communities. And whereas Texans are noted for their love of barbecue and the Star Stripes and Sizzle Barbecue Cookoff is sure to offer everyone in attendance a chance to enjoy good food and good times while supporting a worthy cause. Now therefore be it resolved that the House of Representatives of the 88th Texas Legislature hereby commemorate the 2023 Star Stripes and Sizzle Barbecue Cookoff and extend to the organizers, contestants, and attendees sincere best wishes for a fun and successful event. This is going to be a big deal. And Mr. Sanchez is here. He's involved in it. So it's going to be a big deal. And I think Melissa, your wife, passed out some things last time when people wanted to participate. I don't know how many signed up to be food judges, but Judge, I appreciate, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I think everybody could do it.
Yes, I think so.
Wants free food.
So free food. If you have a chance, come to Pettis. When you see big doings going on, it's a big barbecue cookoff. Should be, I think, 50 competitors will be there.
That's great.
So it's going to be a pretty big deal. We hope for good weather. Once again, it is June 10th, June 30th, and July 1st, 2023. So it's coming up real fast, about a month. So welcome, everyone. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Duarte.
Commissioner Lynn? All right. Had a meeting with Angie Garcia. She's the executive director of Red Cross, which that will be an agenda item we'll talk about, which was a good meeting, Angie. Helped Robbie. We picked up some illegal dumping of tires on Gilrants Road this past week. Got with Ray on some brush pickup in Blueberry Hill. And then, thank you, Ray. I saw they were doing some patchwork out there in Blueberry as well. So appreciate that. Also, I want to thank John Benson, Albert Bridge, and the city crew. When, as we refer to him, not the negative, but dead wrong Bill Nelson on Channel 6. He had reported that we were anticipating a lot of rain this past weekend or weekend before last. Anyway, on West Bowie Street, if those guys get two inches of rain or more, water goes into their homes. And so I had talked to John Benson about getting a crew out there to clean those ditches on each side that go around West, will go down West Bowie and around the side of the Junior High. And they were out there by the afternoon cleaning those ditches to prevent water going in those homes. But we didn't get the rain anticipated, but if we would have, would have been prepared. Also, I attended St. Mary's Parent Extravaganza Night. The second graders' class, they did some singing and whatnot and had different booths set up. Things they've been working on. That was interesting to go to that. Let's see. I put a deal on Facebook, Boys and Girls Club. Just letting the public know their summer hours are from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. And the Boys and Girls Club membership is $50. And that's good from January 1st to December 31st, if anyone's interested in signing up to go there. And there's also a deal going on this summer. And it's called Healthy Summer Meals for Kids. And that starts May 31st to June 22nd. Hampton, Moreno, Dugald, and F M C, they'll have breakfast from 7:30 to 8:00 o'clock, lunch from 11:30 to 12:30. Beeville Boys and Girls Club will start May 31st. They'll go to July 31st. Breakfast will be from 9:00 o'clock to 9:30 and lunch from 12:00 to 1:00. And then also Moreno Junior High will go from July 1st to July 31st. Breakfast from 8:30 to 9:00, lunch from 12:00 to 1:00. And all of this is from Monday through Friday. This is for anyone 18 years and younger and enrolled students up to 21 years old with disabilities. That's a good thing. This is all free for the kids to go get a breakfast and lunch during the summer. Also, this past week, we kicked off the helping the elderly and veterans with their yards and whatnot. And I want to thank Robbie Guerrero, Chris Molinello, and I. We did, we took care of four people here in town yesterday and one in Pettis. And they were very, very appreciative of that. So, and then also, I'll sit on the other side of the room, but I was also called to go to the ribbon cutting tonight, so we're not sitting all three together.
Yeah.
So I'll be there tonight as well. That is all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for all of the Commissioner's comments this morning. Just in real grief, I attended a meeting of our local M H M R contractor, Coastal Plains, last week. It was a board meeting, quarterly board meeting. It was nice to kind of get up to date on what Mr. Trejo is doing with that organization. They've been very fiscally conservative. They have a great balance in their general fund. And so there's lots of flexibility and opportunities moving forward on ways to deliver mental health services to those individuals in our community that can't afford it and really in our region. Finally, I'm going to keep my comments really short. Nameless last words. Just kidding. I'm going to speak for a while, so relax. No, internally, folks, it's budget season. Yay. So please, if you haven't already, go by the auditor's office, right? Pick up your packet or they deliver.
Patricia already sent them all out, an email and in their boxes, too.
So if you haven't received the email or if you haven't gone by your inbox and picked up your packet, please do so. Get started on that. I'm looking forward to working with all of y'all in our pre-budget meetings, which are right around the corner, July, what did we say?
Seven through nine.
Seven through ninth. I guess the sixth may be a quarter.
Or maybe sixth. I haven't really seen the calendar as well as I should, but it's that week, the sixth.
No worries. Yeah, so just be in mind, just keep in mind, it's coming up really quickly. You know, this is your pre-budget meeting. It's your opportunity to throw out those great ideas that you may have, that you've been thinking about, areas where there might need to be capital improvements or new expenditures that are unique over previous budgetary years. So I know Mrs. Cantu and I are looking forward to those meetings, looking forward to see what kind of great progress the departments and elected officials are looking to make this upcoming budget cycle. Moving on, so a fun comment. Everybody loves that. Surprised y'all didn't explode in items of an administrative nature. For a year, is that?
At least.
At least three or four. Yeah, so it's a real problem and it's a real cost that the counties are bearing that the state isn't addressing. Sorry, please go ahead.
And if you'll see, I added other source revenues in there, which is not part of our budgeted revenue. But we will see a budget amendment come through for me to certify those funds. And that's just partial of the settlement for our B C L E C facility, our business, so. Is there any other questions?
No, I saw that opioid, opioid, opioid. So.
That's been discussed for a year a little bit.
Maybe a couple at the most.
Not the opioid.
The opioid, we opened a fund and we have received $30,000 so far from this. I believe our attorneys had come and.
There have been multiple settlements. Later in the agenda, we have those settlements that we're going to be considering. Even more resources for the county.
For sure.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. I need somebody to make sure that we're keeping an eye on the time. I know it's 10 o'clock. We're going to need to move to Agenda Item Number 12. So if you see any hesitation, stop starting, or any movement of the agenda items, ladies and gentlemen, that is the reason. We have a public hearing set for 10 a.m. and we don't want to miss it. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda Item Number Eight, Commissioner Paredes. Approve Alergan, Alergan, Alergan? I don't know how you pronounce it. Alergan to propose settlement, participation agreement, and release forms regarding settlement offers in the matter of Texas opioid multi-district litigation for the county in the matter of County of E versus Purdue Pharma LP et al. Do we have the attorneys available on telephone? Anybody?
Yes, Your Honor.
I think John will.
Oh, let's see. My attorneys, I'm with Simon Greenstone Panetier and I negotiated a settlement.
It's a lot smaller than that.
I don't know.
That's a good question.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
I believe you're going to have to repeat yourself, sir.
Sure. Give me just a moment. Can you, can you hear me better now?
That is better. Yes, sir. You're a little, it's a little.
Great. Sure. So anyway, my name is Jeffrey Simon. I'm with Simon Greenstone Panetier. And I'm the chair of the Land Management Committee in Texas. I am one of your lawyers. And this is the fifth statewide opioid settlement that we have negotiated. And this settlement has all the favorable features that the others do in the sense that it is completely under state control, state jurisdiction, as opposed to the federal system which emanates out of Cleveland, Ohio, and is unfavorable for a number of reasons. I won't bore you with. In any event, what we're talking about here is a payout over seven years, where actually the first half of it will be more front-loaded and the back half. And it is going to provide to B County by the terms of the Texas term sheet, which we negotiated with the state years ago and has been ratified now many times, a little over $11,800 directly to B County. With the first payment, the first portion of that payment is in the last quarter of this year.
Could I ask you real quick, is the $11,802?
2.5, 2.573 million dollars for opioid harm reduction money that will go to Region Four, of which B County, of course, is participant. And so the distinction between those two things is the direct share money you can use however you see fit. We always recommend, you know, that you use it for opioid harm reduction purposes, but you're not required to do so. And then with respect to the money that will come to Healthcare Region Four, that will be available to you by grant application to the Texas Opioid Council, who we understand is going to publish its criteria for applying in September of this year. And we're certainly well aware that not every county is used to applying for opioid harm reduction money and will be here and available as soon as that criteria is published to assist you in, you know, whatever initiative you think would be worthy in discouraging opioid, certainly illicit drug use, and providing recovery services for people in need. So we are recommending, please, that you accept this settlement so that we can make sure that you get paid your portions on time. And do so by having the county judge fill out the authorization as provided.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
The $11,802.80 total direct fund share, that's going to be paid out over seven years?
Yes, but front-loaded over the first three.
Okay.
In other words, most of the money will come over three. And what we're trying to do here is build, yeah, anonymity is not the right word. We just want, you know, some of the drug companies have the resources to pay directly, all of it. Johnson &amp; Johnson paid all of its money right away. No Pharmaceuticals paid all of its money right away, though later filed for bankruptcy. We're the only, we're the only state whose clients got paid sadly. But others pay over longer periods of time because many of them do not have insurance coverage for this because, quite frankly, there's substantial evidence they acted deliberately and intentional torts are excluded from insurance coverage. And so they pay out of cash flow and they pay over many years.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions, Mr. Simon? Hearing none, I entertain the motion to approve the settlement.
Judge, make a motion to approve the settlement to accept the Alergan settlement to authorize a county official signature, which is a county judge under order resolution and a Texas release participation form. And then to scan and email the signed Texas participation release form to the council.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Mr. Simon, for your time this morning and your representation of B County in this matter.
Thank you, too. It's a privilege to be of service.
Yes, sir. Have a wonderful day.
You, too.
Moving on.
Judge Simon?
Has left the conference.
We all need to sign out like that, right, when we leave the room? It's like a town crier, right? Sorry. Time is 9:35. We got lots of time. Good. Agenda Item Number Nine, approve annual financial statement from North B County Emergency Services District Number Two.
I approve.
I have a motion, though. Second. I have a motion in a second. Further discussion? I'd like to thank the Emergency Services District for submitting this financial statement. And more importantly, thank you for all that you do for the safety and security of our citizens. There's nothing further to say. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Ten, presentation given by Angie R. Garcia, V A S Executive Director for the American Red Cross. Ms. Garcia, you have the floor. If you'll come up and I'll need you to identify yourself once again for the record and then you may proceed.
Good morning, Commissioners Court, Commissioners, County Judge. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm Angelina Garcia. I'm the Executive Director for the Coastal Beach chapter of the American Red Cross. We cover 19 counties, which includes B County. We cover all the way up to Worten County, all the way to Plaiver, Duval County, B County, Corpus Christi, Oasis County, and that. So it's 19 counties that we're currently providing services to in times of disaster, preparedness. My goal here today is just to talk about a little bit of the work that we're currently doing in the B County area. So the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies through the power of volunteers and generous donors. So little-known fact for the American Red Cross, 90% of our workforce are volunteers. In my chapter of 19 counties, we currently have five paid employees, and the rest of our workforce are volunteers. My goal here today is to share a little bit about what we're doing in the community, and what we seek to do in the community. I want to first start off with thanking Commissioner Lenny. We had a couple of meetings already, either by phone and in person, and we, thanks to his efforts, we have endeavored to place a Red Cross vehicle in front of the Sheriff's Department under surveillance camera. He brokered that agreement for us. It's an informal agreement. We want to have that vehicle strategically placed, so that when volunteers are called into action responding to home fires, which they're already doing, we have Richard Perry, one of our very newest volunteers, only been serving with the Red Cross about a year now, or a year and a half.
Year and a half.
Year and a half. And in that year and a half, he's deployed around the country to assist those who have been impacted by disaster. And he's one of the residents here in B County. He also responds, one of two individuals that responds to the home fires here in your county and surrounding communities as well. We have volunteers who are traveling great lengths when we respond to emergencies and call to, to assist in your county. They're coming from Oasis County, they're coming from the Victoria Prosperity Area. So we're working with Commissioner Lenny to shore up your volunteer base here in the community. We've had the blessing of a lot of rains right now, so what's happening with the rains? We're going to have a lot of growth in the brushy areas, and what comes in the summer, the drought. It's inevitable. So our concern now is, how are we going to respond in the event that you have an emergency by way of brush fires, or homes are impacted? I've also visited with Beeville Fire Department. They are one of our partners as well. We place free smoke alarms and detectors in their, in their care, and they go out and they install these into the homes that, in your communities, that do not have that protection or that system in place. And it's free. We offer that to the community free. Again, we are looking for a partnership to where we can grow your volunteer base here, so that Richard Perry and other volunteers like him have that support, and we're able to shore up a response in the event that the community calls on us. We also have a sheltering agreement with United Methodist Church down the street. It's only one that we have here in B County. So really looking to the Commissioners Court and community members and partners and stakeholders to partner with us, allow us to bring our resources into your community to, to build that preparedness, and ultimately build resilience in your community. What are some of the services that we offer? If you look in the folder that I just handed you, you'll find a brief, one-page newsletter, and it gives you a little bit of information of what we've been doing in the 19-county region. Please take time to read that at your leisure. We have some bullet points on the bottom. We can just know stories about a little girl that came to visit us from a school. We do a lot of preparedness. Smoke alarms, please share this freely with whoever you would like to share this with. Again, this is a free service to the community. B County, Beeville in particular, has, has been, you guys have recently had an increase of home fires. So what we can do, as I explained to Commissioner Lenny, was that we can go into your communities, we have high-risk maps. So what we do is, we can superimpose those high-risk maps into the different precincts and throughout the B County area, and identify where your, your pockets in the community are at greater risk for fatalities of home fires. So we have that technology. We can come in and share that with you. We can do sound the alarm events, where we go into neighborhoods and identify strategically which neighborhoods are at greater risk for fire fatalities, and do a one-day event of going in and knocking on doors on a Saturday and saying, next Saturday, we're going to be here, we're going to be doing smoke alarm installations. If someone knocks, please open the door. We'll be in your home in about 10, 15 minutes. We can install up to three of those smoke detectors in a home, to ensure that people are alerted quickly when home fires are occurring. Please feel free to share that brochure with them. Where are some of the, some of the areas that we strategically really need additional volunteers is in our DAP response. So that's our disaster action team. So Richard is one of those action team members. And again, he does this, because he loves serving his community, he does a lot of work in the community, he volunteers with the Red Cross because he wants to be there for his community. One of the positions that we are seeking is those folks that would respond and be on call 24 hours. You know, you're not called every day, every, no day of the week, but volunteers can be trained by Red Cross, Red Cross resources, and they can stand ready in the event that there is an emergency, like Richard takes the call. We are warning a response to a family that has maybe suffered a home fire and now needs some emergency assistance. That's the support that the Red Cross brings to the community as well. We also provide services to, to members of the Services of Armed Forces, veterans as well. We are seeking additional volunteers for those as well. And then we also have our disaster recovery caseworkers. So a lot of times, Red Cross will respond to emergencies. Right now, we're responding to an active disaster response in the valley. So our neighbors just down the road in the valley suffered a tornado. EF-1 struck the most poorest community in the valley almost, and impacted 40-plus homes. And of those 40-plus homes, half of them were either declared major or totally destroyed. That could have been us. That could have been anywhere else in the 19 counties. They haven't, they reported not having had a tornado that stormed magnitude in over 100 years. So disasters are increasing in the communities around the world. We're currently responding in Tennessee, Mississippi, Alabama, atmospheric rivers in California. Who'd ever heard of that kind of terminology? But it's here. We are currently responding to over 60,000, an average of 60,000 emergency, disaster emergencies throughout the United States right now, and it's only, it's getting worse. So again, I thank you for the time. Entertain any questions? I thank Commissioner Lenny. We've also, one other thing to mention is that we've also identified a board prospect. So we, so as I joined the Red Cross in November, I really sought out to build up our, our board membership that was inclusive of all the communities that we serve. And the one thing I identified was, is that I did not have any representation from the B County area. So I'm happy to say that we've identified a board member. Will be sworn in in our June meeting, and that's Ms. Sylvia Paredes. She works for, I'm not, I don't know if I'm saying it right, Robbie, the Robbie Realty?
Robbie.
Yeah, real estate.
Yes. So she'll be joining our board, so she will be a strong advocate for the B County area, and really helping us shore up that volunteer base as well. And we will be placing the Red Cross vehicle today, shortly after this, this Commissioners Court meeting. We will drive it out to the Sheriff's Department in front of the, I believe, the jail, where it'll be under surveillance camera. So that'll be available to Richard Perry and other volunteers in the event that they need to go out and respond. So we thank you for that partnership. In June, we're also planning a block party to introduce ourselves to the community, and really get our information out there, and hopefully gain some additional volunteers. Because again, when a home fire or disaster strikes, you want immediate response. The only way to get immediate response is to have trained professionals like Richard Perry to be able to respond from within the community. Because again, Red Cross is nationally volunteer-driven, and help comes from the community, and we have those resources to bring to the community. We welcome the partnership. Any questions for me?
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to thank Chief Deputy Ronnie Jones for okaying the vehicle to be parked there at the Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
It's 9:45. We still have some time. Move on to Agenda Item Number Eleven. Approve request to temporarily close North Railway Street from Farm to Market 623 to Hodges Street in Pettis for competition barbecue. Commissioner DeWitt?
Yes, Judge, Commissioners. This is the barbecue that we talked about earlier, the resolution. And what we're requesting to do is temporarily close North Railway Street from FM 623 to Hodges Street. It is an unpaved county street anyway. The county has not been maintaining it. Mr. Sanchez and them cleaned it up, and you could actually drive down it. No, you couldn't before. And we'd like to temporarily close that, and I'll make a motion to do so.
Got a motion? Got a second? Any further discussion? Once again, great event, and looking forward to seeing it be a great success. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. It is 9:46. We are going to move past the public hearing components, and move down to Agenda Item Number 14. Agenda Item Number 14. Approve expo request for auditorium fee waiver from Skidmore Independent School District for the, I guess, Skidmore Tynan Independent School District for the athletic banquet on May 16, 2023. This is one of those agenda items where the county judge asks for forgiveness, not permission. Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Was it a good event?
Yes, it was. And I want to thank you for doing that. What had happened was, they had planned on doing the banquet at the decafeteria slash auditorium there in Skidmore, and the air conditioning system went out, and they were not going to be able to repair it in time for the banquet. So it was an emergency situation, and thank you, Judge, for doing that.
Yes, sir. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Approve expo request for arena fee waiver from B County Junior Livestock Horse Show for the Horse Clinic on June 3, 2023. And forgive me, ma'am, I've.
Ms. Sayer.
Ms. Sayer is here this morning. Ms. Sayer, if you want to come down and, and talk to us a little bit. I know that there's also a desire, and we spoke before the meeting started, for additional dates. And as I told you, I'll let Commissioners Court know. I've asked if they just come back, maybe the next agenda item, a next agenda, and we'll get a whole list of, of the dates for the remainder of the year, so we can get that sorted for you guys, so you all aren't worried about court approval. But you have the floor, ma'am. Please proceed.
I'm Sally Sayer. I'm the, sorry, the co-supervisor for the B County Junior Livestock Horse Show. And we'd like to host some events throughout the year for the kids, just to, really to, to improve the involvement. We've seen a big number of kids join in the last couple of years. And so one of our, the events we're putting on is a clinic on June 3, and it's to better improve the riders, so that, you know, when horse show rolls around, I'm sorry, my allergies are just, when the horse show rolls around, they have more confidence in themselves, more knowledge, more safety, and so forth. And so we've got a clinician coming in on that date, just to really help these kiddos out, to get them to be better horsemen.
That's wonderful. I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to the second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll say, I think it's probably been going on now for maybe a full five years. The horse show has really grown exponentially.
It is really growing.
And so my kudos to you, and to your predecessors, and of course, Ms. O'Brien as well, for all y'all, all y'all's efforts in those regards. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, ma'am. Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Approve expo request for arena fee waiver from Beeville Little League for closing ceremonies on June 1, 2023. Commissioner Lenny, was this, this is not my, I don't know.
We do have representative here.
Oh, we do? Oh, gosh. I'm so sorry, Ms. Martinez. Please, come on in. How rude of me. You can use the first minute or so. Excoriating. Apologies.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Stephanie Martinez. I am the Beeville Little League Treasurer. And this year, Beeville Little League grew tremendously. We have 534 players.
Wow.
Which last year, we had 430. So that was amazing. We've had that many players. So 534, over 43 teams. We were able to have a challenger team this year, challengers for our special needs children. So that was, that was really neat, that we were, we were the only city in our district, District 29, to have a challenger team. So that was really, really neat to see them. But we're just requesting to move it from where we normally have it, which is on our field, which is our major field, to move it to the arena. One, because the sun, it's hot, and keeping that many kids entertained while they get trophies and things, just, it's easier out of the sun, and just, you know, more for seating for parents. Really, that's the only reason. That's the main reason. It's just more comfortable and accommodating for us all, if we could utilize the arena. And also, just to let you know, Beeville Little League is hosting minor baseball, minor softball, beginning on May, June 16. So we will have games every single night for probably about two weeks. So we are always looking for volunteers. Or if you just want to watch some baseball or softball, we'd be out there. And it's good income for the community, because, you know, Rockport, Pettis, Skidmore, Beeville, Mathis, you know, Ingleside, all these, you know, cities will come into our town and, and eat here, dine here, shop here, gather here. So it's just income that will come in for us. So we'll be hosting that as well.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I have an aside after that.
Okay. Floor is open. Commissioner DeWitt?
The aside is that my wife and I went to Wharf Burger, and there was a huge amount of vehicles at the high schools. And Needville Bus was there. Now, Needville is not anywhere close to Beeville. It's over in East Texas. So they are hosting all types of tournaments and, and everything else. And with what you're doing on your end, and what the high school is doing, and all the improvements that have been done at the high school with the fields and the stadiums and all, it has really made Beeville and B County shine. So thank you very much for what you're doing. And I thank the high schools and your horse folks, too. You can just feel the, the, the energy here is just pulsating. It's shining. It's doing good. So thank you all very much.
Well, so Commissioner DeWitt.
There's a lot of, lot of baseball games played here between the college and the high school and the softball field, which is weak, and we get lots of them. It's good.
Good times for baseball lovers.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir. Anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Best to let go for your three. Okay. We're getting kind of close. We've got 10 minutes, so I'm going to hold off on engineering discussions. Yeah, let's move to Agenda Item Number Eighteen.
About 13, to quote.
Thirteen? Did I skip over 13?
Yes.
I thought that would need. I, I thought we would do Agenda Item Number Twelve, and then Agenda Item Number Thirteen.
Okay.
Are those, they are related. Okay, Agenda Item Number Eighteen. Approve to ratify emergency Tynan hydrocyclone purchase.
Yes, Judge. What that is, is they're moving forward on procuring the hydrocyclones for Tynan water. So they're requesting through, and we've, here we prove all the funding. So we're good to go. Just need to get the court to approve the purchasing. And that's for the existing hydrocyclone. Is that your question? That's my motion. I'll second.
You got a motion and a second. What's the total?
And this is project number 2326, and it's just to ratify, because this, this, we've already, yes. And we went ahead and released payment, and so this is just to ratify, because we hadn't received the quotes, but everything is in order.
I thought we had.
Yes, it's already gone through. We just wanted an agenda item for records.
Perfect. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Go ahead with the motion, sir.
Yes, sir.
I didn't write it down. I'm sorry. That's right. It was Commissioner Olivertus and DeWitt.
Yes, sir.
Seconded it. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen.
Page number four.
That's a great idea. Agenda Item Number Twenty. Approve ARP Committee recommendation to approve the Pettis Municipal Utility District's emergency reimbursement purchase of various maintenance and repair items not to exceed $45,000.
Judge, I make a motion to approve $45,000. Before you, you have a list of the emergency items that we're doing. It's mud pump, mechanical seal, ball and check valves, a rast replacement, purchase pump and a rast check valve. And they came to the committee last week. We looked it all over. There's bids attached and everything. And I'll make a motion, we approve $45,000 to keep this moving forward. They're making great progress. And we're keeping TCQ informed on Tynan, and Skidmore, and Pettis, on what we're doing. And it's, they've got a big smile on their face.
I'll second the motion.
And this is not to exceed, not to exceed $45,000.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you to the committee for your continued efforts. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Man, time is, we're so efficient. I don't want to, I don't want to shortchange either of our American Rescue Plan Committee or our GLO Committees.
Because you can call it, you can call it.
ARP, we don't have anything.
Oh, agenda item number twenty-one.
Judge, American Rescue Plan Committee? Oh, go ahead, I'll try to read it out.
Yes, sir. Agenda item number twenty-one, American Rescue Plan ARP Status and Projects. Commissioner Whit.
Yes, Judge, at this point in time, we don't have recommendations, we bring the report except for Pettis had. We have several things in the works, but we're holding on to keep our funding where we should, I know we're working on the parking and everything added to the Coliseum. Mr. Gonzalez is getting some prices for us, so we'll have more probably at the next meeting.
Excellent.
Mike, period, you have something, sir.
You sure you don't have anything? Any committee members that'd like to weigh in on?
You need a couple more minutes? What we're looking at at the Coliseum, Judge, is coming in and putting overlay on all the paving and adding, how many cap sites?
We're looking at doing like another ten RV slots.
Okay.
And then the dump station, the restroom outside the pavilion, and
Yeah, we're going to review lighting.
And those, the existing RV spots that you have, are they, were they all moved up to fifty?
They were upgraded, but
All except for two, but when I went there and looked at it, those RV slots are split into half. I don't think there's a total of, I forget the total number out there, but say there's eighteen. Half is on one transformer, the other half, so it's not a feed from one to feed all of them, so hopefully we can take Schmeckel or someone out there, actually Domingo, we're going to use to go out there and look at it, and if we can add another ten, they may just have to upgrade that transformer, and it should be good.
Okay.
And also the upgrade where the outlets are sitting.
Right, yes, that, that person, retrofitting needs to be done. What they did, they did enough to get us by for the big event, and we need to go back now and put in some right type of new today.
Bigger block.
Yep, bigger block.
Have we ever considered, are we looking at adding additional asphalt to parking areas anywhere? Or just recovering what already exists?
I think honestly, we're just looking to recover what's already there, and doing quite a bit of drainage down there on the lower, is either, either ditching from there or raising it up for the cover, probably ditching is what they're going to need to do, but Mr. Gonzalez and his crew are going to take a hard look at it.
But that's a good idea, because if we do get the other slots approved, to go ahead and do that, it'd be a good idea to have that paved in that area as well.
Did you have a recommendation, Judge? I mean, did you have a spot that you were looking?
No, no, I just, I know there's, you know, I know we've got some good asphalt that's out there, but we also have an area in front of the arena, or not the arena, but, but, thank you, the pavilion and the show barn. Yeah, there's always, I think they're, in all fairness, and we've kind of killed the time a little bit here, so, but, you know, the big parking area to the north of the show arena, I'm sure there's opportunities to work on looking at that, improving that, maybe again drainage issues that might exist when it's, when it's rainy, when we do have large events out there, and they do open that up for parking.
Lighting in the back is really good, yeah.
And some of that, some of that area does have pavement under that Bermuda grass.
And
We're protecting the pavement.
And to be honest, it's, it's working out good when you have an event like a huge barbecue out there, because they go, they mow the pavement, if you will, and then it's nice to be on, and they're not on hard pavement. But it's still, or the dry, because it doesn't hold water, and to go in there and scarify that, start all over, we need to think about it.
Sure, I know that's a huge ticket item.
Yes, it is, but that's why we're saving back quite a bit of money for the Coliseum, because we want to concentrate on the and we have other items and emergencies that are going to come up in Pettis and probably Tynan that we need to, we're kind of holding back a little bit to help them out.
What type of surfacing is around the, the shooting?
That's older.
It's older.
Yeah, it's really not a problem, it really isn't.
The drain, it drains really well there, it does, oh, yes.
The stream is still going to, it's not really a much of an issue, we talked about repaving what is, what is paved now, and it looks like a great adaptation. Between the arena and the expo, is that a problem?
Mm-hmm.
That's a bad spot.
That's a bad spot, but we need to do something about.
We haven't gone to the shooting area, I was there under last shoot, they have done, without asking the county or anything, put some support, they've done all that on their own, they've added to the building, they've built it, they've, they're going to air condition that one area, they've done tremendous amount of work out there.
Years ago, the Commissioners Court authorized them to put in a restroom, and we were going to run water out there, too.
They've done that.
They have done that.
Oh, yeah, they've done, a real nice facility out there.
That's for Adrian.
Yeah, for Adrian, they all do their own fundraising, they all pay for it themselves.
That's awesome. Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess I was looking at you, I was asking this question. I just knew that you had your finger on the pulse.
Yes.
Excellent, anything further on agenda item number twenty-one?
Thank you.
Hearing none, we will move back to agenda item number twelve. Public hearing pursuant to Texas Transportation Code, section two-five-one point zero-five-two, entitled Public Application for New Road or Road Change, with consideration of petition and application to landowners in reference to closing a portion of B County Road five forty at the end. Subpart A, open public hearing at ten AM, and I'll read subpart B in just a moment. I have a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open said public hearing at ten o'clock.
Second, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes without exception, public hearing is open. Is there any members of the public who wish to address Commissioners Court with respect to the request on the petition application from certain landowners to closing a portion of B County Road five forty to the end? And it's in the, the specific information is in the, in the, in our packet, which is also available to public. Maybe it wasn't. Okay, going once. I'll ask you again, is there any member of the public who wishes to address Commissioners Court with respect to the petition to close a portion of B County Road five forty at the end? And a final time, is there anybody in the public who wishes to, any member of the public who wishes to address Commissioners Court with respect to this request to close a portion of B County Road five forty at the end? Sure, will one of our bailiffs please ask if anybody out in the hallway is here to address Commissioners Court?
Anybody can address Commissioners Court?
Who knows what we could get?
No, we're not.
Thank you, that'd be fantastic. You don't catch fish, you can go throw your line. All right, at this time, I'll move on to subpart B of agenda item number twelve, closed public hearing, you taking any action that necessary to have a motion to close?
Move to close said public hearing.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passes without exception. Do we have any motions on this agenda item?
Just make a motion that we agree to close the road.
Is that, is that where, is that where, agenda item number thirteen?
Thirteen.
Okay, I'll be the expert, yes.
It is, yes, yes.
All right, then, Commissioner, Commissioner Olivares? No, sir, let me, let me move on to agenda item number thirteen, and we'll just hold your motion in abeyance. Agenda item number thirteen, approving grant petition and application from landowners pursuant to Texas Transportation Code, chapter two-five-one point zero-five-two, entitled Public Application for New Road or Road Change in reference to closing a portion of County Road five forty. Commissioner Olivares, did you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to close the road, County Road five forty, so at the end of it, right? At the end of it.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Get my bearings. I want to skip over, yes, sir, I think it is seventeen. It is her. Okay, agenda item number seventeen, approved tax office IT build-out plans for wind engineering and proceed to bid construction. Mr. Mercer, you have the floor, thank you for your patience, I know you wanted to do this last meeting, but we're looking forward to hearing all about what you have to say this morning.
Judge, Commissioners, I apologize for not being at the last meeting.
Oh, no, two meetings ago, I'm sorry, when you were here.
And that one, too.
I've got copies to pass out to all of the
Yes, sir.
Copying up there, going
I'll take one, I'll take one if there's an extra.
I'll give you one, there's one, that's your, you have an extra?
About one.
If you, I mean, I'll
I can't show a deal.
Oh, no, you, no, you take it, I was just asking for extra, but it's okay.
Here, will you want this?
It's okay, no.
Let me just briefly go through these. One of the problems we had in designing this is whenever we got outside the building, and we're extending the building in the ground that's higher than what the finished floor is. And one of the problems that brought our attention, leaks into the kitchen area in the back of the building, because the building was extended, and there is no brick ledge, the brick was sitting at
The ground level.
Sitting at the finished floor level, and the ground level is just about at the finished floor level, so every time it comes to big rain, water seeps underneath the brick, comes into the kitchen. But the ground is getting higher in the, in the drive-through area back there, so we've had to do some creative drainage work in between the building extension and the covered area that used to be the drive-through. This first page, you can see the area that we're going to demo off, the asphalt paving, and the sidewalk is back there. On the next page is the representation of the new building, the new sidewalk, we're putting the sidewalk just in front of the drive-through area, there can still be some covered parking for one, two, three, four, five, six, there's six places of covered parking back there with the sidewalk. We've had to drain underneath the sidewalks to get the water to the north, because the drive, coming out of the drive, the drive-through from the side window is higher. It couldn't, well, we drained a little bit there, and we're going to put a new curb, and then the rest of it is going to be drained to the opposite side of the building, underneath the sidewalk, and we'll be cutting those sidewalks and putting plate, and putting the drain underneath concrete sidewalk. With that, we can get the ground level, and we're, we're having a brick ledge on our addition, so we'll get the ground level three, four inches below that with this drainage plan, so we don't get the water coming in the back of the building. The basic plan is on sheet A-one-point-zero. We're adding hallway, storage, two offices, two smaller offices and one bigger office, with the possibility of taking out the back wall of the concrete vault, the old bank vault, and expanding that. We're going to put that into the base bid, but leave that as a deductive alternate, because depending on the amount of money we get on the bid, that'll be the first thing we take out, we'll be jackhammering out that con, probably concrete wall into the vault. That's not going to be an inexpensive little item, anytime you start jackhammering out a wall and trying to finish it to box it in where it's open, plus doing some finish work inside the vault area itself. This project does not include taking off the old vault door. That's something that I think the county probably ought to just find somebody, come in and take that thing off and help sell it for scrap or whatever. But that's a, probably a three-thousand-pound doors, and it's, it's a substantial metal door that will take some, need to get off. Also got a storage area to the front left of the building. Understanding that that was, some thought about making that an alternate, but Ms. Montes says that that's almost an essential, because they're being gigged by the fire department, I believe, for their storage area that's surrounding, and mechanical equipment, they've got to get some of their stored materials out somewhere, and that's going to be a pretty well necessity to give that a, the gig from the fire marshal. The new area will have its own air conditioning system. We're matching the outside roof of the building as much as possible, although you've already got two different types of brick, original brick plus the brick that's on the existing extension. We mentioned multiple times about just painting the whole building, once we get a new brick on it, and somebody said something they don't like, to say brick painted, but it's going to look a little bit different, you cannot match brick that's that old, because you've got two different types of brick to match, you know, we get the same size brick, but not the same
I think we're more practicality than aesthetics, especially on the backside.
For sure. We'll be all right.
We'll be all right.
We'll be all right.
We are basically through with, with the plans, because we, you all's final approval. One thing that we did come across, standing seam roof on the building, we can't just add roof, we're going to have to go all the way back to the ridge, because you can't let that stand, standing seam and make it very leak-proof. So we're going to have to take off the roofing material all the way back till we get to that parapet wall, it's on one portion of it, or all, all the way to the ridge, put new roof panels all the way down on the back side of the building.
So it'll be solid roof in the center, out?
Yes.
No leaks?
No leaks. Any questions?
Yes, sir, no question.
Yes, sir.
Page E-two-o-one, one-one-one shows the, what's it?
Over there.
Oh, you're there, shows the elec, I, I, I'm not going to presume I know anything, but it, it looks like it shows the power addition, the outlets, I guess, that are going to be included, is that? How do I interpret this, and my only, my only reason for asking the question is, this is the IT build-out, IT has a tendency to have a necessity for electronic devices, electronic devices usually, usually need plugs. Is this, is this
I've requested as many as I can get.
Have you all talked about it, are, are these the actual plugs?
This is, this is what we put in, I think, we used to direct the, but you're free to add at this point anything you want.
Yeah, I mean, seriously, like, I don't, I don't know, but I'm figuring the more plugs the best.
I've requested as many as I can put on each wall, I mean, the, the data center obviously has to remain its own circuit units that are dedicated for our servers and things like that.
And, and I know the draws will, the, the power draw, the energy draw for some of your equipment may get close to, and I don't know a lot about electrical stuff, but I know that you have drops, and from your drops, you go to the individual outlets, and you can only put a certain number of outlets in each drop, and have you all discussed that? Are you going to have adequate power and adequate infrastructure so that if you need to expand?
We'll discuss it.
In the future, yeah, I guess let's just do it now, so we're not cutting into sheetrod.
Mr. Mercer, we just got through fixing the cooling system for the servers there. Is that going to have a different system now, or is it going to be tied into the Z one, or what's going to happen there?
All of the new area will have its own
It'll be included.
It'll be included?
Yes, and it was, it was discussed between me and the maintenance director, maybe moving the unit that we have in there currently out to their office on the expo's center.
The mini split?
Yeah.
Just a question on these electrical outlets, and it's directed more to you than to Mr. Mercer. When I put in my garage, I put the outlets forty inches, thirty-six inches up from the bottom, do you want yours low or high, or does it matter?
Thirty-six inches is kind of tall for an office room, I would rather have them just standard height.
Okay, okay, I just was wondering, like, in a garage, you put so darn much stuff around it, you can't get to them.
And, and the, the far storage and office room, I'd probably want those a little bit higher, just because it's not intended to be built out as an office, it's more of a storage and test, test bench facility, so I'd probably want those a little bit higher, as you're suggesting, but in the other offices, I'd just rather have them to the standard height.
Okay, well, you'll get with Mr. Mercer on where you want those higher, because once they're put in, they're in, and I, I like them high, because so much stuff covers them, and you put them down low, like you said, with your test bench.
The, the exterior wall that we have now, what is that going to be changed to, or is it going to
We'll be the same thing, we appreciate it.
No, no, the, the exterior that we have now, and then you got the new build-out.
We're going to take off the existing base brick.
Okay.
We've got to frame in those windows, windows back there, so they'll be framed in and finished out, refinished on the inside. They'll be framed in and finished out, refinished on the inside.
Is she rocked over there where the servers are?
Yes.
And also the kitchen.
And we talked about the temporary protection for everything in there. You know, once we tear, tear the windows out, we've got to have something on there.
Yeah, keep those servers cold.
Pretty quick.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that mini split, with, with an open face like that, that mini split won't handle it, so.
Quick question, potentially on the HVAC. And it's just because we've had something of history in dealing with air conditionings since I got on this, this August board. Are there any concerns, have y'all looked from an engineering standpoint or design standpoint on the interaction or interrelation between, because this, these two new, the new area and the old area are shared space and I presume that there's not going to be an air seal or a vacuum lock, whatever you call it, between the two, the interaction between the two? Is there any concern about that from a humidity standpoint or a, just a workload standpoint? Or how does that, when you're, I know like houses have multiple air conditioners all the time, businesses do too. And I just didn't know if there's anything that we need to consider. I just want to make sure that y'all considered all those.
Right, balances.
Yeah. Besides balancing.
Besides balancing different areas.
We've got one pathway between the new area and the existing area.
Just the whole way?
It'd be a case opening. From the existing IT room, there's a door that comes into the main area. Or there's an opening right now that we're going to put a door on so that can be closed off.
Okay. Is that where the public kiosk is?
Public computer or?
It's actually behind the public.
Tea office.
What size air conditioner are we putting in?
I'm not sure. Judge, the M.P. is asking.
Any other questions for Mr. Mercer?
Yes, what, do you have a number for us? Do you have a projected cost?
Make it low just in case any individuals who are interested in bidding on this project are watching. Is it like 50 grand?
No. We're looking at over $200 per square foot.
Over 200?
Over $200 per square foot.
Yeah, because we just want a marker. We know it's just a estimate, but at least it gives us just a little.
290.
That's good, that works.
890, 1180, 1180 square feet.
1180. So you lost this there. So 200, oh.
290 on the front and 890 in the back. 1180 times 200 to $240 per square foot.
For a project this size, this kind of, are you going to be able to use a, our, our live board contractor? Or are we going to have a, our?
I think you go out and, or that you've got a live board contractor or something like that.
Yeah, we, we definitely want to go out for bid on, on a, on a project like this. It's just to our benefit.
Be available and, and every local contractor is on the live board. Live board is more for materials and sole source installments. Where a company provides materials and, materials and installs them. You do lighting, for example, because there are lighting companies that sell fixtures and install lights. But on a general contract like this where you've got concrete masonry and electrical and plumbing and mechanical, all of those different, different trades, painters, carpenters, you know, you've got about six or seven or eight different trades that generally isn't done on a live board.
I, I don't under, I, I'm not familiar. It's not, I don't understand. I'm, I'm not familiar with the proposed completion date. Given that we're going to be tearing down a wall or opening up windows where the county's nerve center is physically located. Are we planning, are we considering starting construction on this during hurricane season and in the summer? Or are we thinking about fall 2023?
It's an option we have right now if the wind starts. And we could go out for bids, you know, we haven't set a date, but we're bidding the EOC in middle of June. We could bid this, you know, first of July or mid-July, which is in hurricane season, yes.
Or are we comfortable that the, I know, I know it's an issue as far as air conditioning goes, but from a security stand, from a environmental security standpoint, do we have adequate protections in place of our servers during construction in the event of a high wind or, you know, rain?
Not, not during that type of construction, no. I, I wouldn't be concerned about that if we have any forecasts of hurricanes at this point. As far as projections coming into the Gulf, I would be concerned about that.
Yeah, do y'all have any thoughts on that?
Isn't that only going to impact you is if, if construction has taken walls out or something? Or I, I'm, I'm not following this.
They, they will have to remove the back wall and that old banking window for the drive-through. So that wall will be completely removed. And during that time, I mean, I don't know how fast they can build the new wall and close it in. But that would be the concern that I would have is during that time of construction.
As, as, as we get the brick off, as an emergency. We can, we can seal the outside of the building.
Right.
You know, we'll be taking off some of the, in the demo, you've got a medicine-type roof around. You know, if we do much with the roof, it's more, it's more of a problem to lead with the roof than with the wall.
Has there been any consideration for a temporary removal while they open up the wall?
Oh, I wouldn't know. You can't temporarily move all that. The cables that are required, that would be a whole nother expense.
I was thinking the same thing. What, it's just unplug and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, just let me, let me shut it down and unplug it.
Nerve center with me everywhere I go.
Yeah, yeah, I wished it was that easy.
That's a good question. Mr. Zewitt has nothing really better else to do. We could just hire him as an armed guard 24/7 and just protect the building.
Sit there, pick up my feet up on the back.
Is he going to stop the hurricanes?
So, so what you're saying is that you'll be able to put a temporary wall.
Yes.
It won't be exposed. It'll be a complete wall.
You know, it, we may have to pay the contractor for 10 sheets of three-quarter plywood if necessary to put on the outside wall.
So it'll be protected.
Temporary. We can, we can handle that from a, a win. But you can't handle the roof panel if it's not there.
Yeah.
That's understood.
I'll be honest, I, I don't want to slow the project down because you've been in construction more years than all the rest of us combined. Contractors know how to make temporary adjustments. If there's something coming, something going to happen, they've got a week or two, they've got two weeks ahead. Main hurricane season starts, Ryan?
June 1st.
Yeah, but the main hurricane, September, October, August, September is when they normally come in here, Hurricane Carla, Beulah and all those.
Correct.
Even though the season, the peak, that's what I believe.
Peak season.
The peak in September.
So my recommendation is keep moving. Just keep going.
I think the bigger concern, you, you said the roof, yes, that's a big.
Keeping them cool because they won't function if it's.
How do we keep them cool during construction? Keep that mini split going?
We won't take a minute to do that until we get the new one in.
Okay.
A temporary air conditioner or something like that that can help take the, the pressure off of that mini split. That mini split is doing okay the way it is, but it's not designed for that type of space for what I'm utilizing it for.
Has it been serviced in the last six months?
It's been replaced.
It's been replaced about four times.
It was fixed after that, about two months ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. We, we leave our, the curves open, turn on fans, blow everything in there that we can.
It's not, there's nothing underneath it, right? No electronics located underneath the mini split part?
No.
Oh, that's good.
Question the judge did bring up, and I've been curious too, and thank you for bringing it up as a schedule. Have you prepared a preliminary schedule on timing, broken up by disciplines?
No.
Is that something we'll receive or?
If you want me to do one, I'll, I'll talk to a contractor and you've got some, probably.
I guess what I've seen in the past on construction projects that I've managed, if you don't have it, a doctor and other things will come through and unforeseen events.
And I'd like to have a start date. So what we're here today is to say, ready for me to go out for bids. But then we'll, I'll get with April and we'll set a, set a schedule, receive bids. Normally the process is, you know, if we decide today when we're going to take bids, say it's first week in July. Then generally about three weeks before we get a contract. They take bids, make a renovation to the commissioners' court to award the contracts. Then we prepare contracts. The contractor generally gets in two weeks to get his documents together. We come back, get them signed by the contractor, bring them to commissioners' court. And for signature by the judge, you know, pre-construction, pre-construction meeting. So from bid to pre-construction meeting, we're talking about probably four weeks. It's going to be first, first part of August before we have a pre-construction meeting. It should not be, depending on, depending on contractors and how busy they are.
I guess the schedule I was looking for.
Once we get on the construction.
Right. You won't, you won't get the detailed timing from the contractor. So you get them and identify who the contractor is and their scheduling. But at least at this point, you know, kind of an order of magnitude, you know, we start in August. We're going to finish a year later, six months later, just kind of a high level schedule.
I would say this is probably start to finish from the time we sign this year that we notice to proceed. We're talking probably six months.
So we'll be past hurricane season. Judge, if you would, I'll, I'll call a question and have a motion.
Well, I don't think we need to call a question.
Okay.
There's some promotion for that. You, you have a motion? Don't worry, I'm going to give you an opportunity to answer that at the same time, same time.
I have a motion that we approve and move forward and preparing to be a package.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a motion, multiple seconds, Mrs. Mattis. Further discussion? Mrs. Mattis, you had your arm raised very politely. Thank you, ma'am.
I guess my major concern.
Michelle Mattis, P. County Tax Assessor Collector. Please proceed, ma'am.
My major concern right now, so you're looking, I mean, if everything goes as your said calendar, starting September?
I'd say, what is it?
October because my tax season starts in October and we have no parking as it is at that time when I have my taxes come out. So I guess alternate parking during October.
Well, you'll still have parking up front, right?
Yeah.
You'll still have all those six parking spots you have up front.
I just don't know where the equipment's going to be set up, how.
The contractor in the back parking lot, there may be an area of, say, if he needs to have a lay-down yard for some material or something. Not going to be much equipment involved in this, maybe a bog cat or something. If he's doing his dirt work and concrete work. I would say maybe a 30 by 30-foot, you know, full-size spaceship back in, back into the parking lot on one side. I don't know how many employees we could park back there normally in that back parking lot. We're not doing anything on the side.
What's under the carriage?
We're not doing anything on the side, nothing in the front.
Because there's going to be six after that, so we can put them in the fair, fair enough.
Well, I wouldn't think that the contractor would take up much of the parking area.
I'm not really worried about the employee parking. I'm more worried about customers' parking.
Will the drive-through be available during part of the construction?
The what?
The drive, the drive-through?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be available. We'll be taking out the, we're going to put in a new curb. On this corner of the building around to the street and all the asphalt that goes back through the old bank drive-through will be taken out. But that, that access and exit will still be there.
Excellent. Good question.
Will the generator handle the additional load?
My understanding that he, he decided that this generator is big enough to handle it.
Okay. Any further questions, discussions? Mr. Mercer, thank you. Oh, yeah, please.
All I need to know is that, so I have authority to get with April and come up with a schedule for bidding the project.
The motion is on the floor and I'm about to call. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Mr. Mercer, you have a degree in light. Please proceed with all due diligence. Moving on.
Keep those and look at them.
Oh, thank you. Do you want to copy this? You can have my copy. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mercer, you ready to keep going? Gen 19 approved EOC plans from Lynn Engineering and authorized advertisement to bid construction. Mr. Mercer, you have the floor once again, sir.
I apologize. I did not get these down. We didn't have 3D binders. We normally use those comb binders and we didn't have them big enough for this. So it still has, this document is for internal review, for final review. It's being advertised in the paper this week. And we're putting it into what, Civ Cast, which is an online plan repository contractors go to to get copies of these on their own. But we don't cut down any more trees than absolutely necessary. This, this one, I can leave here, but it's, it's subject to some minor changes. Right at the last minute, we got into the generator. And with the existing air conditioner equipment being replaced, we're somewhere between 600 and a 900 KW generator. If everything is across the line to start, that's still what I'm talking about, across the line. Everything starts at the same time with full voltage for a 900 KW generator. Which is $400 and something thousand dollars just for the generator. If we can put time delays on the air conditioning equipment, stage them back on with like 15-second delays, we can get down to 750 or 600. 600 KW generator is $200,000. 300 for 750, 400 for 900. So I'm trying to get this down to that smaller generator to serve the defense center and the new EOC. I got information from Smickel this morning on the size of the new air conditioning equipment. We're going to be looking at that, but we've got 480 voltages. We've got two different voltage, just air conditioning units. So we're going to put in a transformer to one of them to have one generator serve everything. So it's been a little bit more difficult than what we thought. Hopefully we're going to get down to at least a 750, possibly 600 KW generator.
Just real quickly, Mr. Mercer, with, and what we're talking about, I believe, for those of y'all in the audience, the EOC building will have its own air conditioning units. But the expo center, which is right next to where the EOC building is going to be built, also has two units. One is single-phase and the other one's three-phase. Is that the main?
One 480 volt, one three-phase and one on single-phase.
And, and so when you're talking about sizing down that generator, because that cost is enormous and like, I, I think we all agree, probably largely unnecessary to have, be able to run absolutely everything all the time. But it won't impact the ability of the EOC building to maintain its air conditioning in the event of a power loss. We would just have to adjust or delay or cycle in the expo air conditioners. And that reduces the, the size needed from 900 to 650.
And you need both buildings. If you're in an emergency and you've got 100 responders staying there, bunked out in the, in the event center, you need those air conditioners. But you don't need everything to turn on like that as soon as the generator turns on. That's your voltage requirement peak. Your average peak is when everything turns on and starts a motor. So a 15-second delay, if we take the EOC and 15 seconds later, take one set of air conditioners and 15 seconds, next set of air conditioners, the peak load on the generator drops way down. And that's what we're trying to come up with a way to do that and see how we can stage those. It's either that, you can have variable speed motors or soft-start motors on your, on your compressor system. But those are not, they're duplicating what you've got there now and they don't have it.
One further question and then I'll, I'll open the floor to the commissioners. Ryan, are, are you comfortable with the status of the plans? Do they fully and adequately provide the resources that you're going to need?
Yes, sir. And I, I think the, the delay that he's talking about, I mean, that's, it's a great idea. Because we want to still have that available if we need it. But I would hate to do without having the air conditions in there. We're trying to, we have 200 people show up.
Sure.
And now we're 200 people in a hot metal building.
But as far as the design plans go?
The design sounds good.
You're very comfortable? You reviewed it?
Yes, sir.
It's your recommendation to the court? You're very comfortable, you reviewed it, is your recommendation to the court to approve these plans from your perspective?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, do you have any questions?
Matt, could we read the item yet?
I think I did.
Yes.
I think so.
No, I was going to say on the delay, that's what we use at our, one of our businesses. We have a couple of minutes delay, so when it comes on, we shut down the air conditions for two, three minutes after everything's running, then they come on and that worked out.
Well, this, say, we've got this scheduled for bid on June 15th.
Awesome.
And anticipate at least one more full-blown set-out meeting with Ryan and the group to go. And we've got time to do minor, minor changes, this and that. I've got the generator, you know, we've got a set of plans, we can put this out the way it is now because I've got, we've got a 750 design, I'd like to get it down to 600 if possible. But we've got time to put out an addendum on the plans. If anything else comes up in our final go, come through it one more time, meeting that we'll have in the, this week or the first quarter next week, we've got plenty of time to put out an addendum and make some minor changes in the plans or specifications.
Excellent.
I see John shaking his head. You've had a chance to look at these two, John? Is our maintenance person?
The plans, the. I've kind of heard, I've been getting information here and there. I want to check things like hardware on the doors, final approval on the floor covering. And we're not selecting, you know, the colors or anything like that at this time, that all comes during the construction phase, but just minor things that, mention receptacles, that sort of thing.
Okay.
One thing that I mentioned to our emergency manager coordinator, a lot of facilities are going to the magnetic induction ovens now and stoves. Are we going to have a plug to plug one in if we do buy one of those? I don't know what size of receptacle it takes.
I can't tell you.
Instead of having, you know, propane or butane or electric stove, that way electricity pulls off that more than a magnetic induction, just a thought. I don't know what type of plug they need.
Magnetic induction stove?
Yes, sir.
And that, I'm totally unfamiliar with.
Mr. Mercer, the cost on the square foot for this item, this bill?
He gave us a 1.3 and we upped it in our project list to 1.5.
That's plus or minus, depending on the generator. I feel like the building itself is a 1.2 to 1.3 building plus the generator, which hopefully we can get that for 250 to 300,000 dollars.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Questions?
We can do that.
We're in good enough shape, fine answer to be able to not blink whenever you say that.
Okay.
Thank you. Too bad.
Today.
Today.
Today, tomorrow is a different story.
Depends on.
I get too excited, it's budget season. Okay, so if there's no further discussion with respect to agenda item number 19, which is approve EOC plans from Lynn Engineering and authorize advertisement to bid construction, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Mercer, for your time today, all of your effort on our behalf. Moving on to agenda item number 22, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, status and project update. Commissioners, Padilla, Ali Badis, do you have any updates?
Judge, other than it's going in today, today is the deadline and it got completed, got finished, got your signature, it all looks good right now for the four projects that were selected by the committee.
Excellent.
No, that, thank you.
Well, thank you all for your quick effort and work in this regard to the entire committee and hopefully that process will go, you know, those grant applications will be approved.
And I believe our grant writers reiterated that some of the projects that were approved last year still haven't even been approved yet, so this isn't something that's going to happen in 23, we're looking at probably 24 by the time this.
And if you don't mind, those four projects, very succinctly, which were they?
There's no order.
No, 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 doesn't matter the order.
Okay, the four projects, Pettis Mud, drilling a brand-new water well for Pettis Mud and all the equipment that it takes to get that and some tanks, they're also going to add some to their wastewater, some, I don't have the whole list in front of me, but hey, I have a big item. Yeah, basically Pettis is going to get a real, real big update on their water sewer. Tyne is also going to get a lot of updates on, because they've been continuously having projects, so they're going to, they're going to have an update. I think that we looked at a well for them as well? Yeah, we looked at a new well because that one keeps sanding in. So we're looking at a new well for them and then all the upgrades, new water meter, I believe there's 100 new water meters for the town. I think there's 13 fire items out there. And so they're getting a overall look. Silver Creek and 631 are the other two projects and both of them looking at raising the bridge or one of those has a corrugated tin culvert there that you can walk, it's pretty, I don't know where the grade's gone or.
Yeah, no, it's pretty bad.
It's pretty bad. All of the bottom is rusted out and it's just, the top's put together, but you can see that about a foot or two high, it's all, it's all deteriorated, it's gone.
Does not meet.
It didn't meet the standard.
The design.
So that's the one that kind of tapers off and comes in, so they're looking at, to see how far back they're going to go to get that grade up to where they need to, because it rises about 20 feet above that grade sometimes.
Good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any further questions, discussion?
Is this the mid-mud?
Yes, sir.
Just, because I've worked with all of this, just putting in your application, five to six months or longer before GLO gets back to you.
That's what our grant writers said.
And then you've got to design, you're a year or more away from any kind of construction.
It's been a very challenging rollout, so to speak, very, very difficult for all of the counties.
We're also competing against all the other counties in the state, you know, they all poured them out there at the same time, so we're competing for engineers, grant writers and everything else, so that was a challenge in the beginning, just trying to.
There's so much money out there, finding contractors to do the work, once all these, you know, this, in the, my area of Golden Crest, there's 70-something million dollars worth of grant projects in this mid-mud.
Wow.
And here in another area, in 16 counties around my hometown, there's over $200 billion worth of grant projects. And there's not enough contractors.
Yes.
Not enough engineers.
Hopefully by the end of the year we'll get approved and then we're looking at, you know, next year to get some of the projects started.
Main thing, just keep it in the pipeline, keep it moving, that's all you do. And what's interesting, this is Hurricane Harvey money, and how many years ago was Hurricane Harvey?
Seven.
Seven?
Five. Was it five years ago, seven?
Yeah, about five. It was 17, wasn't it?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. It still hasn't got a fire department yet.
Blanket is still Hurricane Harvey money.
We're still working on that project.
Anything further?
No, sir.
Gentlemen and everybody else, thank you all, this has been an excellent meeting. We don't have any executive session items today, so moving on to agenda item number 23, let me just make sure I didn't miss any agenda items jumping around like I did. I did not. Agenda item number 23 adjourned, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I have a second, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, thank you for your presence, Mr. Mercer, thank you, Mr. Mercer. Judge Ronnie Jones. Oh, that's right. Judge Ronnie Jones.
Judge, please, he needs to.